Irving Street, I'm sorry, does not designate with signage. Trying to find the presentation.
We can look into that. I just, you know.
Irving Street does not have designated signage that prohibits the traffic in. So therefore, there is no enforcement when there's not the appropriate signage. But I don't believe that that's classified as similar to the avenue streets.
Well, I will just say that, you know, I have gotten numerous phone calls. And I appreciate the phone calls. And Lee, we're just voicing the concerns of the community. You know, it's not a Johnny Sillwell's thing or...
Oh, no, I am too. No, I am too.
But he says the community has a habit of...
We want to try to do the best we can for the community.
And the last thing, I want your business to be up there, Mr. Fluger. I think it's an awesome deal for the city of San Angelo. It just comes strictly down to location, strictly location.
That's it. I understand that. Okay. And I understand there's an issue. And I understand there's people that don't like fracking. And they're going to be up, you know, they've got their agenda against the whole problem anyway, anywhere it may be, regardless of what someone may say taking somewhere else. It just happened to be, we're working with a specific location today. And is there an action that could be done that would mitigate one or all of these? My sources say that the management of the operation could mitigate the dust issue. It won't mitigate the traffic issue. It's going to be there.
You don't have anything to do with the one in Barnhart. Is that right?
Thank you, Jesus.
Because that one, the pictures I saw showed it, and I appreciate those pictures. That is a nightmare waiting to happen.
I go through there all the time.
Oh, those are here. Those are on North, those are on...
Those are on Fiercer Street.
Oh, my goodness. But anyway, you know, when I find myself caught at a red light facing west, there are lows and sands and all that. And I see those trucks after truck after truck. I mean, it's mind-boggling. And I instantly think about this location. And that puts a bad taste in my mouth right away. And this is just coming from me personally. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Charlie, do you have a further comment?
Rodney made me think of something else. I wrote the note. You mentioned your operation would be at night or in the hours of the morning.
No, I'm saying TXP has operation.
Okay. Well, it still bothers me because of the vibration of the trucks. You know, those 18-wheelers, and especially when the tonnage is so heavy, they're loaded and they go over any track or across, there's that rumbling noise, that vibrating noise. So to me, there is a nuisance of the noise that's in there. And also, when the trucks are waiting to be filled from the trains, the idling, idling of the diesels, that is a nuisance. But the idling of that diesel and the smell, that becomes a nuisance as well, obnoxious smell and noise that is in the area. And that bothers me. But I need to back up to your illustration that you had. And you said something, the very last item, about not any of the trains loading would be crossing any San Angelo street. I didn't understand that. Would you like to explain?
None of the activity associated with the transloading process would be touching any street.
Oh, while the sand's coming off of the train?
Right.
But as far as the train getting there...
There was some conversation about while the sand is being unloaded, these trains are going to cover, they're going to cross, they're stopping right, they're going to stop on Washington, they're going to stop traffic on all these while the transloading process is happening. And it won't because it doesn't cross the street.
Do I have further comment? Cancel. Mr. Fluger, I thank you very much for your presentation, for the explanation. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes right now, sir. We will take some public comment at this time. I'm going to limit you to about three minutes each. We already know about the traffic. We already know about the dust. We already know about the cliche. I mean, these things have been mentioned. They've been hammered and hammered. So I'm going to ask you to come up and make your statements. We'll limit you to about three minutes. But after we've heard about the dust and the traffic, we've heard about it. So I'm going to ask you if you've got something different to say, then we'd be glad to hear it. But I will take public comment at this time.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Would the council entertain if one area or another has a representative, that we speak from just that person and hear from that person, their representative, and give them a little more than three minutes to state their case since they're speaking for 20 or 30 people?
Okay. We're going to limit to about three minutes. But if you're not through, then I will ask the council. And if the council says you can have more time, we'll give you as much time as you want. We're going to start off with three minutes. Mr. Ford, identify yourself.
Bill Ford, County Commissioner, Precinct Four. And my precinct covers Santa Rita and where we're sitting. First of all, I was real surprised that such a project would even be brought in that location. Y'all risked that. Those of us who've worked and traveled in the Permian Basin the last four or five years have seen the sand depots that are popped up and been out there. The one at Barnhart's, a prime example. The one on Hughes Street is even worse example because of the pollution that comes from the silica sand. It's not just from the dust because most of the trucks are sitting there idle. There'd be 30 or 40 trucks sitting there, 50 trucks, 80 trucks blocking traffic on 67. You can't go anywhere. All you do is sit there in the dust. The trucks aren't moving. It's the silica sand in the air. Now, they don't have the provisions that he's talking about, the filters and whatnot like that. But I'm not so sure that's done anywhere. I've never seen it done. The pictures you showed, Lee, were in a field where there was a mile away from any kind of buildings, which was an appropriate place to put it. And I think that's an ideal location. Putting it in the middle of the city is ridiculous. You look it up, you Google silica sand, and you pull up the EPA location, and it causes a health hazard. Silica sand's a microscopic, very tiny little piece of sand that's circular. And if it gets into the lungs, it doesn't go away. It festers up and causes health hazards, lung hazards. And we're a mile less than a half a mile from the Shannon Hospital. I hate to see them busy with silica problems like they're having in Brady. So, you know, I don't know what the solution is for y'all because of the ordinance. I think there was a very poor interpretation of the word nuisance. You know, you have trucks. I've never seen a frac sand location with that few trucks in a location. They pile up, the guys are being sent there by a... He gets on a radio. He tells the trucks to get there and offload. You can't do it. 25 trucks will not do one-tenth of a frac location, a frac sand operations, in a frac location drilling rig. It takes hundreds of trucks of sand to operate a frac location. He wouldn't be able to sell it, he wouldn't be able to operate to have that kind of an operation going. So I find it real, you know, and just the idea of, the city doesn't have an idle ordinance to stop the trucks from idling. We don't have anything to stop them from unless you're going to park a PD at every location across the street. These guys don't always play by the rules. If you get onto Hill Street and then onto Highland, there's no traffic light to access or cross to Bryant Boulevard. It's a stop sign. Every time you have, everything you've described in this whole location, in this whole industry, does not fit where the location is being placed. It makes no sense at all. And the city should have stopped it. I'm petrified, and I've talked about this for a long time. It's just, I don't know why it was interpreted the way it was. I looked at the ordinance, and nuisance of noise and sand and pollution and dust and not calling silica sand a health hazard when the EPA calls it that is beyond me. But I'm supportive of my constituents that live in Santa Rita and in downtown area that don't want this there. And I really urge the city to come up with a solution instead of going through all the rigors of what Lee's asking for. But I think there's a better way of doing it. I'm tired of waiting. Thank you.
Thank you, Fluger. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name's Amanda Reynolds, and I'd like to voice my concerns about the sand depot. I provided the clerk information about the dangers of fracking sand. We all know West Texas is windy. I mean, no question about that. And as of Monday, there were 1,688 students enrolled in Glenmore, Crockett, Fort Concho, and Santa Rita. And also 749 at the Central Freshwater campus. These children, they're going to be breathing in this air whenever they go to recess, PE, or just changing classes. And I live about a mile from the sand depot site, and I have a six-year-old. She has asthma. She just recently found a friend in the neighborhood where she can play with. Once the sand depot sites build, we're not going to be, she's not going to be able to play with her. We're going to have to go to Crystal. So her asthma isn't affected. So it's not fair to her or the 2,437 other students that are in the nearby areas. And I know, my grandma always told me that nobody said life was fair. But this isn't about fairness. This is about justice and common sense. Common sense would tell you not to put something, a sand depot filled with sand that has cancer-causing agents and other health risks in the middle of the city. There's other places it could be put. You know, sick children, it results in parents having to call in sick, so that hurts the labor force as well. And we're supposed to try to leave the world a better place than the way we found it by having the sand depot here. We're not doing that. It's not leaving a good example for our children. So I urge you to use your influence, not let this go forth. So those of y'all that have already expressed your concerns about this, thank you for putting the health, well-being, and best interest of the residents of San Angelo first.
Thank you, ma'am. Hello, Jesse.
Mr. Mayor, how are you this morning?
Good morning, thank you, sir.
Council, good morning. My name is Jesse Martinez. And before I just begin my comments, I just want to begin by saying that just because you can't see it doesn't mean it's not there. And if it's wrong going forward, then why isn't it wrong now? Mr. Mayor, Council, I represent the growing number of citizens that are opposed to the sand transfer depot. And I believe there's a number of folks here that also are opposed. And if you are opposed, please rise and please stand.
Thank you very much. You can see that this is a concern for our city. And I'll preface my comments, first of all, by saying that we have no issue with Mr. Fluger, his associates, and their right to profit for their investments. What is troubling for us is simply the location, as has been mentioned. And I do commend the council for bringing forward this discussion of light versus heavy. The Hill Street location is currently zoned light manufacturing. But if you apply all the standards as per the city ordinance, common sense, reasonableness will lead you to conclude that this is not the appropriate designation. There are noxious effects to the neighborhood that we will discuss later at another time. We will have a presentation going forward. But right now, this operation does not meet the definition of light industry. Our contention is simply that the planning department erred in designating the sand depot as light manufacturing. And as I said, we'll make our case later. But my purpose today, then, is not to find fault or to find blame, but rather to find resolution. In my research, I'll have to admit that I was confused, somewhat frustrated, in understanding the rules, the ordinances, the permits, and TCEQ requirements. Since then, I have become somewhat knowledgeable about zoning ordinances. And I've also discovered something else that is troubling to me. And that is the manner in which the city operates and how this designation came about. In the planning department, it appears to me that there has been no significant organized collaboration among staff. Equally troubling for me is the role of our city manager. He is either absent by choice or excluded by choice. Either way, that's troubling to me. Because this is an important issue, discussion, and decisions on this matter are significant. And up to now, that's quite puzzling for me. The decision-making appears to be one of reaction rather than proaction. For example, the planning department justifies that the zoning designation is based on TCEQ requirements. TCEQ requirements, on the other hand, for the requirement for permit by rule is triggered by the light manufacturing zoning designation made by the city in the first place. So then, the question for me is, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? Upon filing the appeal to the zoning designation, my appeal was promptly denied. I submitted on the 10th, and you saw it on the board here, on the 10th, it was denied. Further signaling to me that there was no need or no perceived need or no attempt to look into the matter or to seek input or direction from anyone. And a decision of this magnitude merits at least some collaboration among the city staff. And I've had conversations with city council members, not all of you, but I've come to find out that this council has no authority, no jurisdiction on this matter. Needless to say, I'm disappointed, I'm discouraged, and disillusioned at how this is coming about. So who's accountable? Where do we go from here? On this specific issue, we are in need of leadership. Because otherwise, we're on the brink of dysfunction, and it is going to lead to disastrous ramifications. You are our leaders. You are our representatives. And I'm asking that you lead, that you lead with fairness, you lead with reasonableness, and you lead with citizen inclusion. The Citizens Against the Sand Depot will continue our appeal. It is forthcoming. I do have a letter of notification of such action. And I've handed a copy to the clerk to be distributed among you. I do have a letter that I will present to Mr. Fluger. I do also have a copy for the media if they so desire. In closing, I don't know how we got here, but that really doesn't matter at this moment. What matters and what is important is what we do going forward. Mr. Mayor, council members, this, this is a defining moment for all of us. I believe that this issue will give us a glimpse of what San Angelo will look like for our children and our grandchildren. What kind of San Angelo will they inherit? We deserve to know where you stand. The citizens do and will as you move forward. They will get a peek into the content of what's in your heart and the spirit of your character. So I ask you, as we move forward, again, if it's wrong tomorrow, why is it not wrong now? So finally, Council, I lift you and the city of San Angelo because you do have many, many important decisions to make. So I lift you and our city up in prayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. It's Dan, Ms. Beavers.
Hello. Good morning. My name is Rachel Beaver, and I'm the director of the House of Faith. We're located at the corner of Montecito and Bryant, which is just across the railroad tracks from this proposed project. Our issues and concerns involve the transportation issues. We actually transport children, and we have hundreds of volunteers involved with our program. And I don't know if you've driven by and you've seen all the buses and vans that are out on Bryant on our property. And you may wonder, do we use all those vehicles? And the answer is yes. And so one of our biggest concerns is that this is going to bring an increase in big traffic into the area. As we're having to cross Bryant, it's already a bit of a hazard as is. But with as much transportation that we do with our children and youth, we're concerned about the increase in traffic and big trucks that are coming through. The other one is the quality of air. We do have children and youth at our facility on a weekly basis. And we have actually been preparing the way, redoing our parking lot, increasing our outdoor space for the children and the youth to be able to be outside. And we have a dream of building an outdoor pavilion, which will increase our usability of our property outdoors for our children and youth. And so with the sand lot directly across the railroad tracks from us, it would really, I think, cause some issues with the air quality for the youth and the children that we bring in. And so with that in mind, you know, I think we all are in agreement that we're not against business, we're not against increasing business in San Angelo. But the issue here, I think, is the location, and it affects many, many people in our community. But with all that said, if we're needing a use for the property, we're growing and we could use that property in a very positive way. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Next.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Kristy Uke. I'm a resident of San Angelo. And I don't need to add to anything else, I think, that's been said today, except for the fact that I know that everyone in this room, and especially all of you, know that this is not really the vision we have for this part of town. We have spent, as Ms. Farmer pointed out, lots of hours, including Mr. Fluger, on our beautiful community. And it is beautiful. This is a beautiful cultural district. We're working hard to make it even better. And there is a place for things, and we all know this just isn't the place. And I don't think that we're going to be really excited and happy about this location. And I think you're going to have a lot of upset constituents. And I think it's going to fall on your shoulders, unfortunately. That's just the way it goes. You guys take the blame for all of these things. And just because we can do something, just because it says it's on a piece of paper, does not mean we should do it. And I think this is an opportunity for us to look to the future on planning. And let's get serious about looking to the future. What could happen? What could someone take with a piece of property? And they can rightly do so. I think this is an opportunity for us to look at what's happening in West Texas, how it impacts San Angelo, and we can do it together. I think this is something that can be a positive thing in the end for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy Uke. Next. Yeah, if you would, come up toward the front, kind of along the line. There's some chairs on the front.
My name's Peggy Hes, and I hadn't planned on speaking today. But I don't have anything really prepared, but this issue has been on my mind for quite a while. I've lived here all my life. I have friends and family that live here. And I worry about the future of this town. You know, what, when industry stops, or this industry, what's going to be left? Are we going to be a little deuterite and we just have ruins, you know, where our fracking sand thing was? I mean, I was walking down the river the other day with my dog, and it's really nice down there now. It's really beautiful. The noise just from the traffic, you know, and we haven't even seen the sand depot yet, was just, I get migraines a lot. And these trucks have a frequency. And it's, you know, I agree, if something isn't done with a lot of foresight to what how San Angelo is going to evolve, where's it, you know, you can't just throw things out there and hope that, you know, the pieces will come together. People in this area pay some really high property taxes. And at the end of the day, in 10, 12 years, what are we going to be living in? We already don't have a lot of water. So the industry will come and go. But the people in this town that own property, what are they going to be left with? And I stand by Jesse and all the other people in this community that, you know, are asking y'all to have some forethought on where this town is going. The simplest solution, you know, everybody's for business to San Angelo, just take that kind of business to the outside of town, not in our community. We have a beautiful swimming pool and museum, and the noise is just horrible, you know? So I hope everybody can do the right thing and really care about this community. I think Mr. Fluger asked several times, tell him what to do with his property. That's really not up to us, you know? That's up to him. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Little Ben.
Yes, my name is Jim Turner. And not only am I a citizen of San Angelo, I'm also one of the people probably going to have to deal with this soon because I'm on the zoning board of adjustments. So this has been a very good briefing and, I hope, to prepare. One of the things that needs to be remembered on any, this and any other zoning issue, is no matter who's got the property today, the zoning doesn't go with the person, it goes with the property. And in this case, you have to zone based upon what the property could do, no matter who the owner is. The fact that Mr. Fluger, an honorable man who's done a lot of great things for this town, has this plan today that is only this large, doesn't mean that that's what would be on this property next owner. Whatever happens, the property gets the zoning, not the person. That has to be done. The second thing is, we do need to look at our zoning and tie it to other things besides just great maps and geography. We have a lot of zoning around here that may be an issue because of infrastructure issues that don't show up on a map surface. Roads, sewer, water, other utilities that cannot support the type of zoning that is probably going to be there, or is there now, but has not been used yet because historically it was an industrial area 100 years ago. I've got a lot of homework to do before the next zoning board meeting. And I'm probably going to hear from some people now, now that they know that I'm one of the people that's there. And I hope that the council members will get with their zoning board members and make sure they show up. That's also been one of the issues we've had. We have a problem with a lot of boards and commissions, the zoning board, which is one of the most important in town, getting a quorum. Make sure that everybody that needs to be there is there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. When is that next meeting?
Well, it's in November, like next week or the first week, it's something like November. But the complaint hasn't come back, so it don't necessarily be that meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Valenzuela? I mean, it could be scheduled for December.
I do have a question, though, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
In the illustrations that Mr. Fluger gave us with the number of cars, and I do not understand rail freight, foreign to me, but after you, wouldn't that time double on your screen because you've got the empty cars that have got to be put back in and trains have got to be uncoupled, the switches have got to be done? So wouldn't that time double? So, wouldn't that time double?
Lee Fluger. The individual time, you're talking about the time that the cars, the rail cars will block a street?
Yeah, you had on your illustration the number of switches.
But I just want to clarify, you're asking, that was three minutes it takes to cross that, that street with, with the cars? And that would be each time they cross the street with the cars, yes?
So, that time would double, that you had a list?
Well, it doesn't double, it's going to be the same three minutes each time they cross. What people have asked about is, they come up to an intersection and they wait for the train to go by. And there was discussions about, well, we'll be waiting there all the time for these trains to go by. And so, that's why I ask, how long would it take, how long will the street be blocked when they deliver the cars? Or when they take them away each time? And it was, they said, three minutes, that five miles an hour and thousand foot train.
Okay. Thank you. And the only other question I have, the last one, is of our city attorney to advise the council's position, to reiterate whether we do or don't have any authority to change anything at this point. And to ask the city attorney if she has reviewed the light manufacturing ordinance to see if there is a possibility of disagreement with this, how, what the council can do.
I have not reviewed it precisely for that reason, but I will go ahead and look. I've looked at some other city ordinances to determine how they classify sand, and I've seen designations that don't necessarily equate to ours. So, I'd be happy to, you know, just, some type of industrial zones, but they don't equate to ours. So, I'll pursue that, but is your, so, with regard to your point about whether I've examined it?
My main question being is, right now, today, tomorrow, next week, the city council has no authority to change anything that has been done with this property. Is that correct? Or you know of some way that the council can override? That's what I'm asking too.
Well, with regard to the matter that's presented, it's a presentation and discussion, so you can make a recommendation, you're not voting, as I'm seeing it, as an action item.
Right. But it says, "As to the council's role as it pertains to such classifications and processes." I think that's what Ms. Farmer's asking.
I think the best action, the best course of action for council is to make a recommendation. I can't answer your question right now, I can't answer it, but I would ask for council to please make a recommendation as it wishes for the item to be carried out.
Can the council make a recommendation to the ZBA board on this item?
You can make a recommendation publicly, you're not before the ZBA board, it's not, but you can certainly make, and I would recommend that you make that recommendation. And then, I will certainly clarify your role, but as it pertains to such classifications and processes. I would imagine that in order for a classification to be changed under the comprehensive plan or a zoning classification, it would have to be done by ordinance. And so, I don't think the role is different than any other action that you would take to change a classification in an ordinance.
And you're telling me, if I sit up here and say that I, as a council member individually, because we can't take a vote on it, because it's not an action item?
Right.
That I can say that, you know, I strongly recommend that the ZBA board determine the opinion of the city planning manager as to whether this falls in light manufacturing or not? Because in my opinion, it does not fall in light manufacturing, it just doesn't. But that is my opinion, and that would be my recommendation to the zoning board, is it just does not meet the guidelines to be called light manufacturing.
And what we could do is, perhaps you can make that recommendation for staff to then bring that recommendation forward for reexamination to the zoning board. And you're free to make the recommendation, I understand you're not acting as a quorum, but you'd like to get, you'd like to have the zoning board consider reconsidering the classification. So, I would say, make that recommendation and staff it forward.
I just want to make sure that we're legal, we follow the rules as written before us. We don't like them now, we're going to change them, but I, I want to make certain that the ZBA is aware of, apparently, if it's just my opinion, that it should be, you know, reconsidered. That's my standing on it.
Charlotte, I want it, if I may, Mayor. Don, Don's leading, Johnny, let's have Don.
I haven't said anything. I, I've been listening, taking all this in. And I tend to oversimplify things, but to me, it looks like as a, as a council, all we need to do is clarify the definition. And once the definition is clarified, that, you know, frax operation, fracking sand, unloading, offloading, those type of operations, by definition, are in heavy instead of light, that would solve the problem. The intent says, characterized by a relatively low degree of nuisance and adverse impact on neighboring property. I think by the people that are here, we have an adverse impact on neighboring property. We just need to fix the definition. And Mr. Fluger will know what he can do, and the people within there will know what is going on and what can and can't be put there. I drive by the one on Hughes Street every day, I live in Hollins. And I can tell you that when the wind blows, there's no amount of water that you can put out there that'll keep the coalige dust down. You can't hardly go down Hughes Street some days. As far as truck traffic, I counted eight different trucks being, being offloaded or being unloaded off of the train cars, and there were 24 sitting down Bell Street right around the corner. Whether they were, the drivers had had their time and were resting, or they were waiting to be filled, I don't know, it doesn't matter. But there's that much traffic at, at a glimpse. This is just by me going by and driving down there and looking. So, to me, I think we solved the problem, and once again, it may be way too simple by just saying that offloading of sand products, fracking type sand, is heavy rather than light, and we've gone down the road.
I do have one comment from Johnny, and I've got Elizabeth, but we were not through with public comment, and I would like to get all the public comment out of the way first, and then we will have discussion, and then we're going to call this to an end. And anyone that would like to talk to this, I would ask you to come to the front and be in line so we can get you in and out. Your time's up.
My name's Reed Shayham. I'm a landowner, we're doing about 300 feet of the property, and it's in, it's in manufacturing light. I bought it with manufacturing light. I don't want to be accused of somebody that bought a house next to the airport and dropping about flames. We may have a flat Christmas in San Angelo this year due to this. I've always wanted one, so I didn't think it'd come this way. Something, I think the city council, as according to the rules, Mr. Fluger has satisfied the rules of the city, and the question that I want to bring that's different is, we got a handout from this planning manager about the TCEQ ruling on offloading. And it says, if you want to follow along, you probably all got this on the back page, railcar or truck unloading of wet sand, gravel, aggregate, coal, lignite, and scrap iron or scrap steel, quote parentheses, but not including metal ores, metal oxides, battery parts, or fine dry materials in the trucks or other railcars for transportation or other locations is permitted by rule. This is talking about wet sand, wet products. From what I understand, the frac sand we're talking about is a dry product, it's a fine, very fine dry product. So, although it has nothing to do with what the city council can do on this, or the fact that Mr. Fluger's operation seems to satisfy everything according to city rules, I just don't understand where TCEQ came up with that this was permissible using dry sand. So, I want to pose that question.
Thank you, sir. If anyone else cares to speak to this, I would ask that you come to the front. There's chairs here at the front.
Yes, I'm Jersey Bushman, I live 4201 Riverbend Drive. And this question is for the railroad. I worked for railroad for three years, and all this time and everything, they're quoting everything, that ain't going to happen. Are you going to take these cars his spot? Are you going to hotshot them out in the yard, it is on the facility, or stop your westbound train to do this switch?
I'm not the operations department, so I can't speak to that.
If they take the westbound train to, every guard, 100 feet, 100 yards. Okay, stop there, they're going to stop short of the switch, they're going to block all cars, cars across Oaks and Chadminster. What they're trying to do is get those empties out, put the load, so there's going to be lots of delay with this train.
Generally, the empties are picked up on a separate, a separate route. You're right.
Okay, are you going to bring his loads from the yard, like the Alfred Soffer, 100 feet car?
I don't know, I think you'd have to ask Mr. Fluger what his operational plan is, and that would, that would answer that, I think, more clearly for everyone.
I think you've got a good point there.
Like I said, if you stop that train there going to Bartmark, you're going to have to block everything east of it.
I got stopped on Hughes Street, and the train would stop, and then it'd back up a little bit, and I've sat there at Hughes Street for 20 minutes, finally had to turn around and go back.
Time they get their empties out of there, and get their heritage ground, everything like that. I worked for three years for railroad, like I said, I don't know how long it takes to do stuff like that. That ain't going to happen.
I'm glad you brought that point up. That's like a Bible point.
Just for the train.
Thank you, sir.
That's the point I was trying to make.
Anybody else care to speak to this by the comment? This is your opportunity. Johnny, I believe you have closing comment?
I was just going to add to what you said, and she's exactly right. And I believe Mr. Martinez said it correctly, that we, this council today, right now, 11:51 a.m., do not have the authority to do anything unless we take it back. We recommend that it go back to the zoning board of adjustments and change the definition of light manufacturing and heavy manufacturing, because, you know, I don't, I totally, I don't agree that an 18-wheeler weighing I don't know how many thousand pounds is light, you know, 20 tons? That, that doesn't fall under my light category, and that's just me, I'm not the expert. But until, you're right, we can't do anything other than just send it back or recommend to them that they look at it even closer and slice and dissect it, and take all the comments that we make from a lot of these concerned citizens and go with that. I just want to throw that in.
Elizabeth?
I think that was the beginning of Mr. Howard's presentation. If you let him go back to the beginning, that's how we started all of this.
Thank you. It was, in fact, again, Mr. Martinez mentioned that there was an appeal that was sent to the interpreter, you know, challenging the interpretation. We did respond, however, while we did respond fairly quickly, however, we've had two months to think about such to the request. What's, what remains is an appeal to the zoning board of adjustment. That has not occurred yet. There are upcoming dates, that is correct, there is one in November. There's also a meeting on December 1st and January 5th. We have 30 days after that, whenever that appeal comes to our office, we have 30 days to have a meeting of the ZBA to entertain the idea of challenging the interpretation of the, of the planning director. And we do welcome the opportunity for folks to do that. That hasn't happened as of yet, but that's certainly a part of what potentially could happen. That's section 206 of the zoning ordinance, for those who are interested in looking at it.
And so, the first opportunity for that would be at the December meeting?
That's correct. Given, given the late date, we would need, obviously, to provide due notice and to process that. So, we are suggesting that it would be the December meeting, which is on December the 1st. But we have yet to receive an appeal again to the, to the zoning board of adjustments. Once we receive that, obviously, then we move forward with that, with our due diligence.
Rusty?
Jessie, didn't you say that you appealed this and it was turned down?
Again, sir, I, he appealed the interpretation. I had 10 days to respond. We responded that very same day because we wanted, we assumed that we wanted to continue to move forward the process. That what remains is the appeal to the ZBA of the, the interpretation, the response that I provided to Mr. Martinez, and that's yet to happen.
But we have that in our hand, I believe, now.
Right.
Right.
I just want to make sure that the appeal is going to be heard.
Right.
We welcome, we welcome an appeal to the zoning board of adjustment. So, as soon as we, we get that, we can begin to process that. I will take your copy if you'd like me to have your copy.
Did you have some side thoughts?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to make a quick comment. The comment that was made a while ago, as far as absent by choice, as far as the city manager, I have pained over this deal for hours, I have revisited the, the interpretation, I have looked at the area and pained over the thought and idea of any harm coming to any of our children, anyone in that area. This is not something that I've taken lightly whatsoever, and I just want to make sure that I made that comment known. I care a lot about this community. There are certain interpretations, certain items that are in the, the criteria, that quite frankly, and I do look forward to the ZBA having an opportunity to take a look at that. But again, this is something that I've spent quite a lot of time on, and quite frankly, I do want a good resolution to this as well.
Thank you, sir. Wendy, did you have a comment, sir?
Yeah, I better make a couple of comments. My name's Achar Wardlaw, just briefly, a couple of clarifications. Number one, this is not the appeal, this letter's not the appeal. It has to be in a different format. This is just a courtesy notice to Mr. Fluger to let him know that once we file our appeal, he's sort of enjoined from proceeding further on his property, and we don't want him to take the position that he ambushed us. We ambushed him. And number two, I want to point out to everybody, I'm really upset as an attorney and disappointed as former councilman, when Mr. Patrick Howard received the initial appeal from Jessie, he gave no, there was no due process. The opponents of this have never had the opportunity to express their opposition in any form or fashion. He just, he just turned it down the same day. Didn't give these people, didn't give Jessie or anybody a hearing. You know, we have due process in this country, and he failed, but we'll go to the ZBA. And then the third thing I want to clarify is, I believe Mr. Howard is misstating the law. As I read the ordinance, he had, when we filed our appeal, he had, going to have 30 days to deliver that to the ZBA. And the statute does not say that the hearing has to be within 30 days from the date we file our appeal. He just has to deliver it to the ZBA, and then they can set their own agendas when they want to hear this. And I want that clarified, because I don't want anybody to take the position that the opponents have, have failed to follow the law and somehow know they're barred from having their appeal heard in front of the ZBA.
Thank you, Wendy. Any further comment? Last call. Well, just for the record, I've not said anything either. But I've seen what this has done to my part of town out there on Hughes Street, and I would really hate to see this same thing happen in Santa Rita and Hill Street. So, I think it's a terrible, terrible location. That's why I brought all this, that's why I put this on the agenda, because I wanted, I wanted y'all to come out and say what you've said. I wanted you to make your positions known. We wanted and we needed to hear this, and I think it'll go to ZBA. I think it'll then probably end up in the courts, and if we say no, we're probably going to get sued as a city. So, it's, it's going to be So it's, it's going to be a fun time. But you were heard, and I think that's, that's, that's what we wanted to do today, is get your input.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, let me, let me just read verbatim what the, what the zoning ordinance says, so there won't be any confusion. It says, within 10 working days after a request for interpretation has been submitted, the planning director shall, one, review and evaluate the request in light of the text of the zoning ordinance, the official zoning map, the comprehensive plan, and any relevant, any other relevant information. I think I included it in the packet, possibly. Number two, consult with other staff as necessary. And three, render an opinion. The interpretation shall be provided to the applicant in writing by mail. We did that on the 10th of this month. D, official record, the planning director shall maintain a record of interpretations. The record of interpretation shall be, be available for public inspection during normal business hours. Appeal, and this is what was mentioned earlier, appeals of written interpretations made by the planning director shall be taken to the ZB, zoning board of adjustment within 30 days of mailing of the interpretation, in accordance with the procedures of section 214. So we do have 30 days after we receive that to actually have the zoning board of adjustment entertain that issue. It said it shall be taken to the zoning board of adjustment.
Within 30 days?
That's correct.
You said 30 days, but just clarify.
Well, you have, you have up to 30 days.
Up to 30 days.
It says it shall be taken to the zoning board of adjustment. So if they're suggesting that it only shall be taken to the board, and the board can schedule a meeting however long, how they choose, then that's, that's something we could figure out. I mean, if that's, that's the, that's a challenge to the interpretation. But what our understanding of is taken to the, when it says shall be taken to the zoning board of adjustment, that means that they will hear that within 30 days of the, the written appeal.
Okay, so Mayor, that would mean that the December meeting is not within 30 days?
We would have to schedule a special meeting in order to entertain, and that is our understanding.
I'd like to probably... Are we through with this one? It is 12 o'clock. I'm going to take a seat to executive, and then when we come back, we'll start over again. I appreciate everyone for being here. I thank you for comment, for your comments. This is, this is the citizen participation that I want. Thank you very much.